My name is Elizabeth Montgomery. Can you hear me all right? I live in Hidden Valley Lake and I belong to the group Hidden Valley Lake Watershed. After the FEIR was put out, we asked the hydrologist Arnat Hageman to review it and to review the comments made to date by geologist David Adam. David Adam has written several letters and spoken several times here. And I won't go into the details of that letter. You already have a copy of that?
I just read it.
Because I truly just read it so thoroughly. He does detail the various emissions in the final environmental impact report and he makes some specific recommendations to correct those. Also Kirk Cloyde from the Community Service District spoke last time and Commissioner Sullivan suggested that his recommendations for monitoring be followed but the final environmental impact report basically dismissed those comments as not being specific enough. So in addition to these professional endorsements of Dr. Adam's conclusions, I would like to present some evidence of strong public support for Dr. Adam's recommendations. We have gathered actually now 575 signatures on a petition urging you to collect the data recommended by Dr. Adam. And some of those are online and I also have here the signatures that we have collected I would also like to make a few additional points. The environmental impact report is a very biased document. It's not a neutral one geared to helping you in your decision-making process the way that CEQA intended it to be. It doesn't really offer the commission any choice about alternatives to the project as required by law or even any significant site-specific mitigations. Now, Mr. Cheney explained that, well, if you don't find any significant impacts then you don't need to make any mitigations, but I would contend that that's part of the biased nature of the report. One particularly disingenuous tactic in the final was to consider current construction activities that are bothersome to people as a baseline condition. So, you know, they kind of slipped in this construction that's happening on this old permit and then consider it a baseline condition and say the fact that there are currently significant impacts don't matter. Also making one of the alternatives which are supposed to be less impactful, an expanded version of the project seems particularly cynical to me. When Steve Zaleski appeared here and gave a thorough description of the alteration of his report, he was quite eloquent about protecting one's reputation, about protecting the integrity of the consultation process. I'm very sorry if his brave choice to come forward resulted in consequences that he didn't expect. However, he can't un-say what he said. As much as the questions about rare plant species may have been resolved to his satisfaction, he's left us with still unanswered questions about the honesty and validity of the EIR. Perhaps as disturbing as his testimony has been the county's willingness to ignore its larger implications, correcting the dishonesty you've been caught in is not the same as re-establishing trust that has been broken. Audrey Knight seemed interested in repairing the damaged relationship with the community and I'm sorry that she seems to have departed abruptly. Thirdly, I would like to talk about the buffer zone between Hidden Valley Lake and the vineyard. In March of last year, Commissioner Rose Hill asked if a precedent would be set by the placement of the vineyard adjacent to an established community. This was when only 40 acres were being considered or admitted to, so it's a much larger project now, but we're talking about the same vineyard acres right next Eagle Rock Road in Hidden Valley Lake. Rick Hoel responded that there had been one vineyard approved about a year ago adjacent to Clear Lake, to the Clear Lake Riviera subdivision. He said the buffer on that one was 300 feet and that half of the buffer would be cleared and the other would have the understory removed because there were manzanitas and pine trees. Commissioner Schu said that he conducted a site visit and Butch, I assume that's Butch Frediani, took him around the whole site and noted that they would do a 400-foot buffer. When the motion was made to approve that buffer, an addition of a 300-foot buffer along the side of the property of the vineyard to the residence of Hidden Valley Lake was stipulated. And at the time, that was in accordance with what the agricultural commissioner had recommended. What has changed? So, you would indeed be setting a precedent by reducing the buffer to 200 feet. The idea that wettable sulfur will be used in the last 100 feet next to the subdivision seems laughable to me. So I hope that you will restore what you, your previous decision to grant that 300-foot buffer. I hate to think that I am subjecting those people on Eagle Rock to a worse condition by having pursued this matter. Finally, I would like to demand once again that some prior notification be given to residents who desire it regarding spraying of agricultural chemicals. At a bare minimum, it can't be too difficult to make an audio recording or to post online the information about what will be sprayed and when. That way, an interested neighbor could check a website or make a phone call and take whatever precautions might be appropriate for, say, an infant, somebody with a health condition or a pregnant woman. So, I think that the reason given in the FEIR for not doing that was that it was too difficult, but given the technical capacities of this outfit, I think that it's a very reasonable request. Thanks very much. Oh.
Over here, please.
Thank you.
Let's get started. Okay. Steve here, Lake County Ag Commissioner. In regards to the buffers first, I always recommend a 200-foot buffer. That's my standard. But it's not unusual for people above me to want a 200-foot buffer provided that there's some kind of a wall or some kind of interference between the application and the homes. That's not unusual at all. What is unusual is for the company to tell them what they're going to be spraying prior to applying anything. That is unusual. No worker does that. They do it by choice because they want to be along with their neighbors, but it's not a requirement. And something else was mentioned today, too. The ag burns that are, that can be done outside the ag burn days. Maybe there's more to it than that, but my office is involved with ag burns only if there's a disease in the orchard or vineyard and has to burn to get rid of the disease or the pets. Many other examples of exemptions, but that's the only ones that I'm involved in, that very rarely happens for grapes. It's mostly with pears, with firelight and all kinds of stuff like that, but it's very rare for grapes to be burned for disease reasons outside of the proper area. So, thank you.
Good morning. Thomas Nichols, Scott Valley Water Conservation District Director. At the last two planning commissioners meetings regarding this project, I spoke of my concerns about the wildlife habitat being destroyed or fragmented. This morning, I'd like to address several other issues. If I read the report correctly and understand it, the final EIR report states that there will be no cover crops implemented with this project except on infrastructure, roads or avenues, as they call them, to prevent that. The beneficial practice of using cover crops in organic and non-organic vineyards is widely known and is in use with some vineyards in Lake County as well as other counties in California. A report from the Winery and Vineyard General supports this with the following benefits: Protecting soil from erosion; Regulates vine growth; Improves soil fertility; Improves soil structure and water holding capacity; Enhances biological diversity in the root zone; Provides habitat for beneficial predator insects; Provides firm footing for harvesting operations; And improves air and water quality. Due to the proximity of this project and the grade towards Hidden Valley Lake, I would seriously recommend that cover crops be implemented throughout this project to at least address any soil erosion or nutrient loading into this lake. The second concern is the setbacks that have been implemented in the final EIR report regarding proximity of vines to water sources within the project, creeks, ponds, streams, et cetera. It states that there will be only a 25-foot upper zone between vines and water source. I find this setback very contradictory considering the current marijuana cultivation ordinance currently requires a 100-foot setback from any water source. I'm wondering why this vineyard project received any preferential treatment in this regard. Any and all cultivation in this county should have consistent setbacks. Thank you.
Did you fill out the form for your sign up? Yeah, if you could speak, I'm standing. If you could sign up for the next agenda, I'll draw a map, fill out everything ahead of time and then drop off. Thanks.
My name is Julie Kreese and I would also like to add that it's really, I feel like it is just so simple for the vineyard to notify the people that live nearby when they are going to be applying any kind of pesticides or chemicals because it allows the people to just close their windows. I get a downdraft from the mountain and I leave my windows open and I want to close them if there's going to be chemicals coming in. And as Elizabeth said, you know, leaving something on a website or being able to call a number requires almost no effort and yet it can, you know, protect the health of a lot of people. And so I would really like that to be taken into account. Thank you very much.
Hey, ma'am. I'd like to sample both of the people here and bring back the commissioners addressing the question.
Commissioner Hodgins, would you also have a rest of your time?
Sure, we'll take five.
Did you speak out, please?
All right, is that better?
Thank you.
So first of all, just to clarify, this is currently being managed as a sustainable vineyard that both minimizes pesticide use and maximizes water conservation and it will continue to be managed as a sustainable vineyard. And in the final EIR, the revised, slightly revised project description specifically states that this will continue to be a sustainable vineyard with minimal pesticide use and maximum groundwater conservation. Secondly, also just to clarify, cover crops are part of the current vineyard management practices and will remain part of the vineyard management practices going forward. I wanted to take a moment next and I'm going to go through these comments in the order that they were given to the commission to explain my understanding of the burn permit process. Basically, we do have a burn permit through the Lake County Air Quality Management District. Butch Frediani, the project manager, is required to call in every single day of night or morning and they are only allowed to burn on days when the air district says that it's acceptable to do so. And they must check, I believe, either the night before or the morning before because the air quality district checks the atmospheric conditions to make sure that burning is appropriate. With that said, we have agreed that we will chip to the maximum extent feasible and that we will keep chipping equipment on the project site while vegetation removal is occurring in order to mitigate that. The next thing, are there have been multiple comments asking for advanced information of pesticide use? And I'm going to digress briefly and touch upon something that Mr. Cheney discussed earlier, which is the difference between a mitigation measure and a condition of approval. And what you're acting on today is the EIR which contains mitigation measures. What you will consider on November 10th is the use permit which will contain conditions of approval. And mitigation measures are required under CEQA to reduce environmental impacts to be less than significant. Conditions and approval are imposed under the county constitution of police power and are grounded in mitigation measures. So there are some issues that are being raised today that are more properly addressed as conditions of approval when the use permit comes before you on November 10th. And I know that your planning staff is working very hard on drafting those conditions. But we have communicated that we are absolutely willing to post on our website advanced notice of pesticide use. It's practically, logically, infeasible for us to affirmatively give notice to the residents of the subdivision. There might be renters, homeownership changes, there might be vacation rentals. So it's unrealistic for us to do that one-on-one notification. But I did speak with the owner and the great owner, the vineyard manager, and they are willing to post their notice on their website and they are willing to have a condition of approval to that effect included in the use permit when it comes before you on November 10th. I also wanted to clarify comments about fencing and wildlife corridors. There is a perimeter fence on the property right now that will remain unchanged as a result of this project. There may be some interior fencing that will be added around specific vineyard blocks, but the fencing is already there, is part of your baseline condition and it's not a new environmental impact that will result from this project. Then I wanted to take a moment to talk about the legal aspects of the groundwater study and water supply assessment. Mr. Cheney noted, addressed the technical response after I've done. CEQA does not require every conceivable study. As you can imagine, part of the tension in any type of public process is a desire for more studies than the law requires. In this particular instance, with the draft EIR, as Mr. Cheney noted, we complied with the Lake County general plan requirement for a groundwater availability study to show that there was enough groundwater to serve the project. Then there was a comment letter requesting what's called a water supply assessment. A water supply assessment goes further than a groundwater study. While county staff disagreed that a water supply assessment is required by law here because this is an agricultural project and not an industrial project and that water supply assessment requirement applies to industrial projects that will occur outside of the acres. County staff did want to be extraordinarily cautious and more transparent and provide more information to this commission rather than less information, which is why the other study analysis was butchered. And as Mr. Cheney explained, both studies found that there was more than enough groundwater to serve this project without having any significant impacts. I understand that your planning staff will be bringing forward a condition of approval attached to the use permit in a couple of weeks that will help provide some monitoring to make sure that those studies were accurate over time as time goes on. So for purposes of this project, the groundwater studies have exceeded what is required by law and some very expensive studies have been done. And in terms of the comments that springs were not analyzed, we did ask our hydrogeologist to go out to the community twice for obvious reasons. He can only look at springs that he has legal access to. He cannot trespass on the type of property. He cannot go into people's backyards. So he went out in both April of 2016 and August of 2016 and to the extent he had legal access and could view a spring, he considered that those springs in his analysis. But obviously, just like we couldn't go to your backyard without your consent or to your property without your consent, he was limited to what he could legally have access to. There was a comment about current construction activities we included in the baseline and since CEQA requires an agency to analyze the environmental impacts of its decisions before making certain final EIR or approving a permit, you have to start that analysis somewhere. And the legislature has decided in the CEQA guidelines that if you establish what's called a baseline condition or your existing physical condition as of the date that the notice of preparation for the EIR was prepared, or that the date of the notice of preparation for the EIR, excuse me, that date is March 1st of 2016. So the physical conditions on the property were included in that baseline condition that's specifically what the legislature allows in the CEQA guidelines. And just to clarify, we did have a vested grading permit that where some of the vines, some but not all of the vines authorized by that grading permit had been planted. We only included vines that were planted in the ground as of March 1st, 2016 in that baseline condition. We did not include any vines. So the EIR complies with the law exactly as the law requires. The next comment was some concerns about possibly setting a precedent with this project. The action before you today is an adjudicatory action and each individual permit application is its own. So it's legally impossible for an action that you would take today or an action that you would take on November 10th regarding the use permit to establish a county-wide precedent. And adjudicatory act means you judge the facts that are before you. It's similar to being in a courtroom and just as if you were appearing in a courtroom or a judge on a matter, a judge looks at your specific situation, not at every situation that's come before the court. So it's very similar to that. I mentioned that the applicant is very comfortable and will have a condition of approval requiring the information on the website for example pesticide use. And finally, just to wrap up before I proceed over to Mr. Cheney, there was a comment about the setback for marijuana purposes versus vineyard purposes. And I just wanted to point out that the setback, the law records started out being 20 feet. Those were, because that is what your ordinance and your general plan required. After working with staff in competition with the health department to issue law guidance, those setbacks were increased to be a minimum of 50 feet. So we have exceeded all of these waterway setbacks required in both your county ordinance and your general plan. And we did that in a conventional consulting with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have and I'll turn it over to Mr. Cheney to address some more technical issues.
Any questions at this point?
Item one. Why the change of 300 and 200 feet on the setback? That was a condition of approval for the previous grading permit.
I'll address that. We had on the project proposal, originally as the project went in, we had a bigger plan that's adjacent to the property line and that was moved back to 200 feet. The issue with 300 feet was really related to the application, as we understood, sulfur spring and dry sulfur. And having a 200-foot setback and having another 100-foot of wettable sulfur, we felt according to the issue related and written in the response to comments from the county ag commissioner, that that should have met the requirements for that. There's requirements for spraying with NAPPs for the, so what the dry sulfur is primarily the issue with dried in as we understood it. And so we changed that to the 300-foot setback on the buffer and was stopped.
And the applicant argued in response to the earlier requirement issued in, I believe, 2014, the applicant purchased and immediately converted to using wettable sulfur. Purchase that equipment and hazard on the lake and is already using wettable sulfur as much as they can right now.
Any questions?
In response to a couple of the comments that were raised, the question about a conflict resolution process for noise, I believe the county already has one which is called the planning department and the code enforcement. That's the place. Once the condition of approval, use permit is issued, the resolution process goes in the camp. So I believe there is not a place that would need to be a separate process to be created for the project specifically. Related to, let's see, the, talk about the ag burn piece, related to the water supply assessment, a couple of comments respect the letter coming in from Mr. Hageman in terms of professional capacity. The project that, and the water supply assessment was developed for this project was also done by a true layup geologist, a professional in the field, just like Mr. Hageman. Obviously, we run into differences of opinions from time to time in different professional capacities and I think this is probably one of them. Our opinion is, is that the project does comply with CEQA, does comply with state law and the water code in terms of the analysis. We have wells out there that were analyzed that were available. Comments related to the additional wells. Many wells get drilled and if you go through the water well drill report, a lot of them don't have very much information other than maybe a location, date and volume of water that may be needed. A lot of them don't allow us to determine what type of geology is in the well. A lot of them don't have very specific information about water, just maybe a pump test in the area. Some have much more information. But everything that was available was looked at and information that can be used in the water supply assessment can be used appropriately in the process and met all the, we believe we met all the requirements of the water code for those pieces. And there's a question related to, you know, the area and how much water is coming out and basically the water supply assessment, we really did look at a comprehensive inventory of the wells in the study area for which we had access to and were able to get information and were representative of the area. We have, the analysis has numerous cross-sections that show where the wells are located at, what the water depths that were reported to the different well drill reports are located, what type of material that we could find was available from a geology perspective. So there's quite a, I believe there's 24 cross-sections that do show the subsurface conditions that were mapped and provided in the report and it has a very clear delineation of that. The other thing is that the volume of water in the Clear Lake basin that is being analyzed is a very large basin compared to where the project does sit. There are many more areas that has been improved and expanded. of the wells in the study area for which we had access to and were able to get information and were representative in the area. We have, the analysis has numerous cross-sections that show where your wells are located at, what the water depths that were reported to the different well drill reports are located, what type of material that we could find was available from a geology perspective. So there's quite a, I believe there's 24 cross-sections that do show the subsurface conditions that were mapped and provided in a, in a report. And it has a very clear delineation of that. The other thing is that the, the volume of water in the Clear Lake basin that is being analyzed is a very large basin compared to where the project does sit. There are many more areas that has been improved and expanded the study area to 6,500 acres to meet the requirements of the state law and water code for that analysis. And in those pieces, again, we found that the volume of water coming, that being used and proposed reuse for the project, is a very insignificant amount of water in the entire basin. And that that water, pumping that well alone, could not account for drawdown on springs if they hidden out of lake. And in many cases, hidden out of lake, it's probably supplied by other water in that basin that is adjacent to the project, is not impacted by the project. There was a discussion about some of the perks of water that potentially could be there. And really, the groundwater basin has such a vertical, horizontal extent of water around the site, that it really isn't perched on top of anything in terms of, I've just got a small piece of water sitting on top of my, my cup here, and then once it's gone. This, this is a very large area, the water flows in and out of that area. So it's not really a perps condition. The ground below it has some permeability to filter water, but there is a lot of water in that area that needs to be analyzed. And the last thing is that, as Tina mentioned, the vineyards really do operate and use water extremely sustainably. It's, it's a highly sophisticated irrigation system that provides water to vines when they need it, provides a minimal amount that they need as the vines get stressed out, water gets supplied. It's not as though it's an overly ambitious irrigation process that uses lots of water and no overhead sprinklers. And so I think in terms of the volume of water, and we showed in there, even though we have analyzed that in WSA, the water supply really does provide enough water out there for the project, but the surrounding uses in the multiple dry years into the future. And that was a task of the analysis to look at, not just today, but into the future as well, and found that there'd be sufficient supplies. I think really in terms of, unless there's any other questions about that, I think more questions needed at this point.
Hey, Cheney, I'd like to respond to your comments.
Sure.
I'm, I'm living at home surrounded by crabs, and I find that could be a pretty good situation for me. There's straight off to anything, and they're better than, than most land use I'd like around me. Having said that, there's no, no event permit associated with the creation of a land.
Right.
And I would like to point out that in your EIR, you referenced the, the non-promotional events amplified after a public event shall be subject to departmental review after one year of operations before the use permit. I, I would really caution you to try and work with the neighbors to not be sitting here here and now trying, trying to keep your use permit.
Exactly.
That is my biggest concern.
And I would agree. I think, you know, the, the issue is that the vineyard operator and the applicant in terms of their special use events that they're living at, their special event, they are trying to provide some type of vent out there for the vineyards. And I would agree that I'm trying to provide additional noise that's going to be excessive and go outside the parameters of the code. And it does come down to event by event. I would agree with you on that. And other operators I've worked with on, on other facilities, not just vineyards, but other organized camps, noise becomes an issue because it is a new activity or a different activity than people are used to.
And sound can carry it.
Yeah. And sound can carry it. And it does become something that you do hear. I live across the street from a recreation facility that, you know, went in after I built my place, and it's a, it's a, I can hear it. And I also recognize and respect the fact that I'd rather have that there than a large subdivision with a lot of people in it. So the recreation facility is, I can take the difference from that. What I can say is that, you know, the code does provide, the county does have a criteria. County planning staff are well aware that this is an issue that, that needs to be evaluated. They are, I'll speak for Bob, but I, I think I can speak to him when I, when I say that they, they are anticipating they will be getting concerns from the neighbors about different events and how they're evaluated. My comment to the, to the applicant is to be cautious and be mindful of the neighbors and make sure that the events are managed and appropriately taken care of, despite his intent to do that. And that's the best I can apply.
I think reduction in the nighttime levels is a really good one.
Yeah.
The, the noise from harvesting a spring is, is part of the operation, is not really something that's, you can argue with, but amplified noises is.
Yeah. Well, I think that, and I believe the nighttime yeast that we talked about before, that happened there, was a recognition of the fact that the county does have the criteria to have it. And just to, the switch between the nighttime levels, and just making sure that, you know, everything is cleaned up and put away, and that we have that, and we have that.
Commissioner DuCroix, I could just point out that this is an applicant who has gone beyond what's recorded every step of the way of this application process and the CECL process. We, you know, even though staff on the negative declaration was appropriate, we went there for my own part of the EIR at great expense to the applicant. Again, even though a water supply assessment was legally required, we prepared a water supply assessment, it was not an inexpensive step to have prepared. We are willing to, you know, be vulnerable, we are chipping to the maximum extent feasible. We are willing to lose notice of the pesticide use on a website and from far to do that for a decision approval. So this is an applicant who does his best to work with the community, and we will certainly catch your comments onto him, and we expect that he will continue to do that when the end begins.
Very simple, everything, the, the, the reason I mentioned noise, because I think it has a promotional function, it did have a, and I think the diminished in the responsive portion of the EIR, when it says the mitigation is necessary to de-race the number of impact, it certainly has a potential to do that, and that, you know, is under a big, a great touch of humor.
Well, we thank you for your input, and we will certainly make sure that that is at the forefront of the applicant's consideration.
Again, nobody wants to be here again talking about a year of that.
I live next to a family whose teenage sons play hockey until 11 o'clock at night on the back fence. It's very old, very tough. Thank you.
The staff has prepared the staff report on this, is a 34-page document that you have. I'm going to highlight just a couple of areas that are important. One is the discussion about the buffers on the 300 feet versus 200 feet. There is nothing in the zoning ordinance that addresses this specifically, we don't have an agricultural buffer. When you take a look at our general plan, under the agricultural resources element, there's a policy AR 1.6 on buffers. And the, one of the conditions, they talk about the size of the buffer, shall be determined by case-by-case, or site-by-site basis, that can be used to account the type of existing agricultural uses, the nature of the proposed development, the natural features of the site, and other factors affecting this facility. A little buffer of 100 feet in the property used for our article shall be required. So the general plan is only 100. The general plan also has that, in the implementation section, that we are to amend the zoning code to include the buffer, but yet to have that in that. So that's an action that has to go forward, but updating the zoning, we need to address. The guidance from the general plan is 100 feet. Minimum, yes. Traffic, that, that's always a concern for me because I know how, how traffic is becoming a serious problem very quickly and expensive problem for government. And as pointed out in the presentation, they have done additional traffic studies, additional traffic counts, which is very helpful in understanding the situation there. It is level service A, free flow of traffic, it's a very nice situation. And as pointed out, the general plan is level service C. Now, we have a, you know, so you have, the county has a plan for the deterioration of the quality of traffic flow in an area. And I will tell you that that is extremely common in government. In fact, I will, my experience, many governments actually do a level service E or F. Because the problem is, is that there's a tremendous amount of cost in proven roads. And if you wanted to keep the level of service A in a rural area, you're going to start being putting in three, four, six lanes of traffic for a very small number of cars. And so, and that's a very expensive proposition. So from a planning perspective, and from the impact on budget, this project is not increasing the level of service, and we have in our plans allowed even further of cheap grades to a different level. So it's, it's a situation that we have, that we planned for, and that's what we're trying to standardize. On the pesticide use, that obviously is a, a great concern. And it's a great concern throughout the state of California, because the state has tremendous amount of regulations dealing with pesticide use by agricultural. And working with the various agricultural systems in the county, that's one of the things they keep complaining about, is all the regulations they have, the Hollywood document and everything. And so I really believe that the, that address the applicant's indication that they're willing to put those on the website, that they will make when they're going to be applying pesticides, and that's a reasonable approach. And they certainly addressed that by the conditions on the general plan. Noise, yes, I agree, noise is an issue. Noise, though, is one of those issues that we have to deal with at the staff level almost on a daily basis, whether it's barking dogs, or truck movement, or whatever, noise is an issue. If the county is going to continue to grow, if you want to encourage economic development, if people are going to be allowed to include the property, there will be noise changes and noise levels, just in fact of life. If you want to be in a very quiet, pristine place, an alternative, like being moved to Alaska, and get thousands of acres around you, and, you know, isolate yourself. But in a county that is developing and things are happening, there will be changes in noise levels. Now, let's reason, that's really the question we have. Again, the applicant's putting conditions of limiting, might they have events and things like that? I think those are very reasonable things to help minimize the, the impact of the water. And I do agree with your comments, this is something we don't want to have to deal with a year from now. And I think the applicant has gotten the message very clear, and we use, certainly monitoring it very closely to make sure that that's not an issue. And we'll be looking at any additional conditions that we can pose to try to prevent that, that problem a year from now. The final one is the hydrology. And as you know, my background is world resources, I was a world resources director in the county of Florida, had a company that we did groundwater modeling. I had the longest administrative experience in the history of the state of Florida, dealing with groundwater and groundwater permitting. It was a five-week hearing, and we had the battle of the modelers. And even though I am not a certified hydrologist or engineer or anything like that, I can throw all the stats on the table and discuss the issue. The applicant has gone beyond what is required with the water supply assessment. There is, you know, certain additional information, and it, in some ways, is helpful in finding the level of impact that this project has had. Changing, with the water supply assessment, as was indicated, the area was increased, and that, that was helpful in understanding more the hydrology. And if you take a look at just the, the average, the average year of withdrawals, it actually is a, an increase in the amount of water going into storage, which suggests that, if you take a, you have to understand water balance, a snapshot in time, at one particular moment, because as you add water, the water level increases, the flow out of springs is going to increase, the flow into the lower aquifer is going to increase. So it's, it's like a complicated calculus problem, it's quite a complicated calculus. It, so many things are changing all the time. So when they say that there's actually, they talk about a surplus of water, and there's available water, no, what's happening is more water is being put into storage, and ugly starting changes of, of, of the grid. But it is on an average year, you know, this, this water going into storage, which then becomes available for withdrawals and other uses. When you take a look at the dry year, and you are reducing the amount of water in storage, you're pulling more water out of storage than is going in, it's a reduction of about, about 4% of the total amount of storage in the aquifer. And just, you know, playing some quick calculations of the thickness of the aquifer and things, that may result in about three inches of drawdown in the aquifer overall on average. So, and I will tell you my experience, and in the trade of hearings and things, three inches is not significant. That's just, it's a flip on the radar screen. The next day it rain, and you'll, you'll recover to that very quickly, and this is really done a lot. But you don't want to look at just the average overall. Because when you look at the water supply assessment, they did some pumping tests, and on well number three, the drawdown was 105 feet. So, you know, it's not just three inches, it's 105 feet when they start pumping. Now, we know, a well is pumped, there's a column of depression, and it curves down. And that column of depression depends on a lot of areas, the layers of the aquifer, the transversivity of each of those layers, the connectivities and things. Looking at this information, it suggests to me that the aquifer is rather, has a rather low transversity, because it's dropping very rapidly down to 105 feet, but then the recovery is very quick, once they turn off the, off the test, which suggests to me that the column of depression doesn't go out a tremendous distance. But we still don't have any pump tests or any monitoring wells to document it, but it's something that suggests that there's a significant impact here. So when we put together the staff report, I had written a, an additional mitigation of impact of 3.9 feet, this is on page 18 of the staff report, where we put in a series of, of mitigation measures. What I first would like to say is, as presented earlier, there's a difference between mitigation and conditions. And working with the council and going to a CECL book and things, I realized that I, I was an error that I should not have made these mitigation measures, I should have been conditions. I'm recommending some language changes here, but we will be recommending these as conditions. And so, conditions are like, prior to the use of well number three and four for irrigation, and that's those are the wells that are represented to us through the pumping wells, that the applicant shall provide a map of all known springs, water bodies, and wetlands on the property. And so, you know, you get a map of exactly what is on the property. Why is it only on the property and not surrounding properties, as pointed out by the presentation earlier, there's a limitation of how you can get on other people's property to document things. And in a prosperous project like, like this, I've seen in other places where people actually refuse you to get information that you personally need, but they use it against you. And so, we, I can't, we cannot require them to go on other people's property, get information about other water bodies or springs, or, you know, the other wells. The, the, our monitoring program shall be placed upstream of each spring, the monolith of change- B, the monitoring program shall be placed upstream of each spring to monitor the change in the water level. And the monitoring program shall be provided as kind of described in methodology and methods of monitoring the change in water levels throughout some of the pumping activities. What we're trying to understand is, depending on what the groundwater level is, that will cause the flow of the spring. And also, we need to understand the pumping. So when we turn a pump on, we want to make sure that the wells are being monitored to see what changes in water levels, if any. So we need to understand the impact on the springs. So it's a complete monitoring program for the springs. We also want monitoring wells replaced by sea wetland and water body to monitor the changes in groundwater levels. And staff gauge shall be placed to wetlands and water bodies to monitor the water levels. Monitoring plants shall also be provided by the county. Purpose of monitoring programs is documented, there's no significant impact on the local springs, wetlands, or water bodies as a result of a pumping. I have done that kind of monitoring, I work on a well field where we had a whole series of wetlands, the staff pages and the monitoring wells, you go up, you're on the same menu, measure everything, and your pumps turn on, you're measuring it, so you can see the relationship. So, a very simple pump, it gets us that map and you see if there is any impact on the wetlands, water bodies, and springs.
Can I make a point? Give me, how many, how close you want to me?
On somebody, what happens with wetlands or other springs and things, I don't know, I suspect that's not a large number.
I would say, you know, from looking at the property, we know there probably are one, one spring and one small wetland area that's over ice cream flow road. The pond on the west side, as you mentioned before, is a surface water pond, doesn't really have spring contact to it, so there's no continual flow once it stops raining, it stops, there's no more runoff, there isn't getting any water in it. There may be one or two scattered around that are hidden that we can't see, but we haven't, we haven't found any, it's just a matter of going through the records and looking with our...
And you're not raising any objections, for sure.
Well, that's the applicant.
Well, that would be, that condition of approval would not be according to the inclusion of approval that comes in November. And our, what we have committed to do with Director Macerelli is to work with him to identify how these conditions would be effectuated in reality, that we are not generally objecting to the concept of such a monitoring, we just need an opportunity to flesh out the circumstances for the condition of the pumping project.
All right. Conditions B would be the monitoring wells we constructed within 10 feet and second within a hundred shade of the monitoring of wells number three and four to monitor groundwater levels during the pumping of this well. What I'm trying to get is, what is the colt depression, how far out does that affect? And again, this is some of the work with the hydrologists, they may have some information that says it would be something a thousand feet away or something like that, full workout and that, and purposes to get a clear understanding, when you turn the pumps on, pull it down, how far out does that impact go? And that, sure that it doesn't adversely affect the surrounding areas. And then finally providing any reports providing the data on monitoring programs and the interpretation of that data. Because the staff agrees with the final environmental report that it is not a significant impact. But the staff does fill out this condition, that we want that monitoring and collected data to verify that it's not adversely, or is creating an adverse impact. And so that's why we're recommending a condition. So, for the language change in the staff report, under the 3.9B, we have come up with some modified language that, under the discussion of level impact, the part about Lake County general plan, the project was evaluated, determined that it was sufficient or sufficient proposed, estimated demands and such demands that created a disuse of water supply. In order to make that demand, a word demands summary was prepared for the project assessing the proposed project. And using the information for the study, a separate groundwater availability study was prepared to determine the proposed water demand, but it's probably insisting groundwater uses and the potential impact that it would have on groundwater supply. Projected water demand, what the man is of the proposed project was evaluated and also discussed in the EIR section 3.17.
Having trouble hearing you back here.
The water demand study was determined that the volume of water could be expected to be used for each of the various elements of the proposed project. And so those waters, including high resources, insisting proposed education, one professional orgies, and the board and visitor orgies, and the purpose of looking at summary, and to see for the details on types of volume and calculation. As adopted, the water demand summary of the proposed project will require approximately 124.71 acre feet per year, which is the equivalent of 40.5 million gallons per year. Refer to the water demand summary report for the detailed calculations and description. Adeble groundwater supply, groundwater availability study was completed for the project, and to determine the proposed project was efficient for available to meet the project demands referred to tables 3.91 and 3.92 for information relating to groundwater, soil data, and projected well production estimates. Detailed discussions of project site theology, groundwater basins, and other related groundwater information is provided in EIR section 3.9 as well as the study. Projected water use and groundwater study includes onsite as well as noting the project for water banks. As an estimate, the onsite water demand used for the existing project and the conditions and combined conditions, table 3.9B, by a comparison of the proposed project groundwater use and the onsite groundwater uses within the basin. The limited substitute, it's in the current staff report for impact of 3.9B, with this language in the closed history. With that, the staff recommends, I got to do this in sequence. First, adopt the water supply assessment, correct?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, okay, yes, adopt the water supply assessment, then adopt the final environmental impact report, and then the mitigation and monitoring report. There was going to be three separate actions.
You have two motions.
Two.
And the EIR and mitigated monitoring report.
I'm sorry.
The page that you gave us as a handout, Bob, is that going to be a change to be noted today?
Yes, please.
It'll be on the... I'll make the motion and then I'll... I'll make the motion and then I'll... All right, with no further discussion, I would move that we adopt the water supply assessment. I move that the planning commission adopt the resolution adopting the water supply assessment prepared for Wild Diamond Vineyard Project as proposed in staff report and as amended today. All in favor of adopting the water supply assessment, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I also certify the final EIR. I move the planning commission adopt the resolution certifying the final environmental impact report and mitigation monitoring and reporting program prepared for Wild Diamond Vineyard Project as modified today, has been completed in compliance with SEQA and the state SEQA guidelines.
Sorry?
All in favor of certifying the final PIR, say aye.
Aye.
Note the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the California Environmental Quality Act and the County of Lake zoning ordinance provide for a seven calendar day appeal period of the certification of the EIR. If there is a disagreement with the planning commission and appeals to the board of supervisors may be filed, the appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM, honor before the seventh calendar day following the planning commission's final determining. We're going to take 10 minutes to do the calendar day review.